Good evening and welcome to the Berea Board of Education meeting for September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mrs. Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mrs. Michael?
Absent.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, we have no public participation this evening, so we're going to go straight into our Polaris update by Mr. Doug Schwend.
Okay, got a lot of great stuff this evening. Last week, on Tuesday, we had our board meeting for September. And so at Polaris, they needed a new salt shed for the salt they use for when they after they plow and they put down in different areas. And so they decided to use the building construction group of students to build this. So it's a pretty cool thing. They're getting to learn how to form footers, watch them pour concrete, they're helping lay the block because there are going to be block walls. And then I think they're going to end up framing the roof on the building. And it's really neat because it gives them a hands-on experience doing something that, you know, normally they wouldn't get to see. As many of you know, it's Polaris's fiftieth anniversary this year. And they created a video, and it's called Empowering Futures. And I really encourage everybody to look at it. It's really a great video. And there's some cool AI in there where they have children saying like that they want to be a firefighter or something, and then it shows them older as a firefighter. It's really a pretty neat video. If you get the opportunity to take a look at that, please do.
Doug, can I interrupt you real quick? Is that the that's the video that you sent that was attached?
Did I send that to you guys?
You actually so in the Polaris agenda that he sent, it is linked in there because I saw it. It's really a cute video.
It is. And the thing with Superintendent Diane Xander at the end, she got to talk to she's like ninety years old, the teacher that kind of influenced her to get into education. Yeah, and she got to talk to her, and it was really, really a neat, a neat concept for the for the that's all part of the anniversary celebration.
Yeah, so it's linked in that agenda.
Little update on the Earn and Learn program. So they started sixteen seniors representing our associate schools started on their path, receiving their STNA credentials. So hopefully the program is really successful, and they're talking about adding some additional students in the next semester. And there were two Berea Mid Park students who chose early enlistment options into the military service, and I wanted to recognize them. Jonathan Amsten, he's in the construction trades, and he's going to be in the military police. And Elijah Creighton, and he's in the criminal justice program, and he's going to go into the military police as well. Several members of the Polaris administrative team have been meeting with the Browns, and they're forming a partnership to explore opportunities for our students within the Browns organization to work with guest services on game days on a part-time basis. So we'll see how that goes. And when I get more information, I can update you guys on that. The Workforce Services Department at Polaris, they're the ones who kind of had the internships and things of that nature. And they do some of the career exploration for not only high school students, but starting in even first grade now. Camp Discovery is part of that, and some other programs that they have. And over the summer, one hundred and fifty-nine students completed internships. These students represented nineteen Polaris programs, including satellite programs, which would be at the high school. Over seventy companies were involved. And after they complete these internships, they kind of do like a debriefing with the people at Polaris and the Workforce Services, some pros and cons for the employer, what did they get out of it? So they can try and improve that experience for the for the students. The workforce, the workforce, workforce people at services came up with a program for guidance counselors at the high schools. And it's called Manufacturing for a Day Educator Experience. And they're going to go to seven different manufacturing facilities and learn about some of the manufacturing jobs and how maybe they can bring that back to the schools and get the students interested in some of the manufacturing jobs that are out there. And there's also going to be kind of like a second part to this. And I think it's the end of November, where ten students from each of the associate districts are going to go on a field trip and visit the same seven manufacturing facilities, and they're going to give them tours and give them information about these manufacturing jobs. So I'm really looking forward to see how that all how that all turns out. The last thing I'll leave you guys with is the on October seventh, from six to seven thirty PM at Polaris, there's going to be an open house, Discover Your Future College Career and Resource Fair. And there's going to be two and four-year colleges there. There's going to be employers there. There's going to be apprenticeships there. And I encourage anybody that you would know that from high school students or people that have already graduated high school, and maybe they're looking to change careers, there's going to be a lot of opportunities there for that. And I do have like a JPEG of that, which I can email to you guys and if you for social media. And if you want to maybe start putting that out, so it can get out to some more people. And that's all I have. Any questions? Yeah, this was I was really excited, really excited. There's a lot of good stuff going on.
Hey, next on the agenda is a superintendent's update.
So I have a couple of things. I'm going to actually start with Mr. Draves. He's going to give an update on what we've been doing over the summer and currently doing with regards to permanent improvement.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a good opportunity as we finish up the summer to kind of show you what we've been doing in district operations. It's a the summer is always our busiest time. I did want to notice or make sure I recognized our team that puts a lot of work in. It's not. It's not really just me and Ross, but Michelle Nelson, my administrative assistant, Ross Rowland carries a good bulk of the facility water, making sure that all the buildings and grounds projects get done correctly. Deb Summers is his administrative assistant. Dorian King is our transportation supervisor. Barb Costia is his administrative assistant. Ashley Shock is our new router, doing a fantastic job. Therese Schwinn, Doug knows her, is our dispatcher. And then Carrie Beagle in Nutrition Services. So there's a lot of construction that goes on over the summertime. We, as we have talked about, we really, because we have newer buildings in BPE and the high school and grindstone to a lesser extent, we do, as you'll notice, a good bulk of our permanent improvement monies will go toward the middle school, Big Creek Transportation, some of our older facilities. So you'll see that in here. The middle school got a ton of love this summer, a new track that to the tune of three hundred and forty-six thousand, new fencing around there. It should be done by Wednesday. It wasn't quite complete yet. New sports center flooring, new carpet, got a facelift on the office for our new principal, Ms. Prock, and new carpet in the main office. And there was also painting done in there earlier in the year. Just wanted to show you some of the pictures. This is, this was the old track. After it was milled down, they took it down one and a half inches into the asphalt, and then they put a new one and a half inch asphalt layer. And then they put the, you can go on to the next one. This is what the surface looks like now. The it was done by Vasco, and the surface that you guys approved should last us twenty-five years with proper maintenance. And so we got to make sure that we maintain it properly. But the new surface is called Plexitrac Lightning Track, so hopefully we're fast on it. And it should last a pretty long time. So we put more money into it. It was an expensive project, but we believe the old track, and Mr. Mack could probably correct me, but I think it was only ten to twelve years old, and it was already done. It was really kind of a safety hazard. To be honest, there were there were huge divots and points where kids could easily turn ankles. So we were excited to be able to get this work done with the new fence going up around it, too. And I will add, we I had a meeting with Chris Franklin this morning. It's a plan for six cameras around that track facility now that will be able so we can monitor it twenty-four seven as well, because we were always very concerned about putting this kind of money into something. And then we couldn't see what was happening. The new sports center floor, if you haven't seen it, this is what it looks like. It is also an extremely, a more expensive product than this is called put in by Mondo. So if you when you go over to Baldwin Wallace, their track is Mondo. It's a really high quality surface. We expect to be able to get a long time out of this, too. This is actually, it was called, it's Mondo Power Play Two. This is the first time that this product has actually been put into the United States. It's typically, you see it a lot in Europe, and they were excited to have this put over here. And they'll be using it to show people the product, the early returns from our gym teachers and in our coaches has been fantastic. That was nineteen ninety-four, I think, was the original sports center floors. And so it had lasted a long time, but it once again had gashes and holes, and we needed to do something with it. I just wanted to show you what the office looked like. We needed, we need a new carpet in there. And so we had new carpet put in and painted, and it looks, it doesn't look like old Mid Park High School anymore. It's starting to look a little bit like Berea Mid Park Middle School. It certainly looks a lot nicer than it did. The old fencing there, which was old, you know, kind of rusted, and we're should be done by Wednesday, but all the new poles are in. And the fencing, as you can see, is lined up to go up, and it should be done hopefully by Wednesday. Grindstone Elementary, I'm not sure if Anna was on the board when Grindstone was built, but that was twenty-twelve. And so the turf lasts about ten years. And so we had gotten two, three extra years out of it. Once again, safety hazard cuts and in areas that really needed to be replaced specifically under the swings, get a lot of wear. We went with, just so happy with the surface, we went with the people who had put in our turf field over at Groza that we had built a relationship with through through the Browns when we got that field donated by them. It's called Forever Lawn. We have just been so impressed with their customer service. Whenever there's a problem, they are unlike the other groups that we had worked with, Johnny on the spot coming out to help fix us. They're willing to work with Andy Templeton, our maintenance guy, and show him how to do fixes as well. So the kids will get it. It looks really nice back there. And Mrs. Grimm is very happy. Also, time to refresh some of the rooms. We've kind of been on a cycle through there. So I pick a hallway every summer for Grindstone to get the classrooms done. There's so many people retiring from there, so we kind of wait till they retire, and then we redo the room for the new person coming in, because they have to take all their stuff down anyway. And it looks, it looks really nice. Big Creek, some more, it's, it's, you know, some more infrastructure things that we needed to get done. And people wouldn't even know that you had really made the change. But if you look at, we had, we took out all the hallway ceiling tile that was asbestos backed and replaced it. And so that had been on there. And so we have a plan where we'll be going over the next two to three years and finishing up all the classroom spaces as well. And then a BDA is a bidirectional amplifier. And we had been told by fire and police in Middleburg that we were in violation, and we had to update our BDA. And so we put a new bidirectional amplifier in there, which helps the safety services communicate. You wouldn't think it, but Big Creek's hallways had gotten beat up in the last four, four or five years. And so we did the main hallway there, we actually touched up and painted a bunch of spots that needed to be fixed at Big Creek over the summer. They didn't get a ton, but they got a little bit done. Transportation Department got a lot of our PI budget this summer. Three new school buses, if you do the math there, they're about one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a school bus. They're very expensive. We painted the building. We actually painted that we it looked so nice, and I hadn't put the garage doors on there originally. It was kind of like, yeah, we might as well do the whole thing. And it didn't cost that much more. There was some cement work done that we had to do because we also put in new fuel tanks. And if you just click on the next one, our fuel tanks were in the ground, and they had been put in before Mr. Mack started teaching in the district. So a while ago, probably early eighties, and if not the seventies. One of the concerns is EPA concerns with underground tanks. And we had been fine, but I didn't want that to come to bite us. I wanted to get it out because we knew that eventually it was coming. So Jill was good enough to have us work with our fuel dealer, and we were able to get a new above-ground tank. One of the other problems with the other tank is when we were driving school buses back in the eighties and nineties, they were mostly diesel. So that whole side of the tank, we were actually have more gas buses now. And so we are running out of gas so quickly, and they're coming out to refuel. We needed a larger gas portion of the tank and smaller side for diesel. And so now we have it kind of right size for the fleet that we're now driving. That you could see the building just looks so good. If you get a chance to drive by and see it, everyone's been very happy. And there's one of our new school buses. Berea Mid Park High School, also obviously a newer building, but we did a couple of things here. We did, we had some floors that hadn't. And this was actually at work with Panzika, and they shared some of the cost of us fixing this, is some of the floors began to peel really quickly. And so we actually buffed them down, and then we just polished the concrete there. We did, I think, in total, about ten classrooms that needed it. And I think now we're in a good space with how the floors look. And then the community-based resource room, the teachers in there, their jobs try and help prepare kids for when they go out into the community after they're done with school. And so they wanted a more home environment that also could have some adaptation that would be more like what they might live in in their own apartment. And so they actually took our SMR room, and they made it like a bedroom for kids to be able not to go in there and sleep, but to mock kind of what their living spaces would look like. And so, for instance, this counter, when you go up with a wheelchair, you couldn't work on this space. There was no way to be able to get into it. So we added this counter in. And for example, it's hard to, over where the sink is, we removed the doors. You could get the wheelchair underneath there and still be able to get up to the sink. We put in some pullouts in the in the cabinets. So because when you go up to a wheelchair, and you can't open the door, and then also be able to to get the cabinets open and be able to so be able to get the things to come out to you instead of having to go in. And so this was the work that was done by our teacher in there and by Trish Kukura, who is our special ed coordinator. Rebecca Labassi is our teacher in that room, and she's very passionate about making sure kids are prepared for when they get out into the real world. Also, pupil services got a refresh, and they were in dire need of that. I've kind of been picking off an area once a summer to put carpet and paint and make it look a little bit better. And so they the pupil services was the lucky winner this year. So as you see, in total, we did about one over one point seven million dollars in work in the district. So it was a very busy summer. And as soon as the fence gets completed, we'll be all done. So hopefully Wednesday, we wrap up our summer PI. Any questions?
I'm just really glad to hear you say that we are investing in companies of strong products.
Yeah.
That will hopefully live and be around longer than perhaps the last longer than what we currently or previously had had.
I think, yeah.
That's a good investment.
And we hope that the companies that we've gone with have been vetted, and we're really hopeful that they'll do better than, say, the last track did. But you never know. But we hope you're right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Draves. I just had a couple more things. One, I think we put out today, you see across the state of Ohio, that state report cards were put out. And I know Christina put out just a small little highlight of the report card. And it's just a reminder that at the at the October board meeting, Mr. DeSenza will give a more in-depth look into the report card. But just as a whole, the district ended up with a four stars. And four stars means that we are exceeding state standards. The high school is at four stars. Big Creek was four and a half stars, and Grindstone was at five stars, which means significantly exceeding state standards. And Brook Park was at three stars, which means that we are meeting our state standards. So that just gives you the star in sight. The rest of the detail about the report card will actually be coming in at the next meeting. But I do want to say this publicly because I put it in the board update, just kind of a sneak peek into next year, which I think this is just unbelievable news. I just want to go back. We had told you all that remember, the state, the graduation on the state report card is always the year in the rears. So the graduation rate that's in the twenty-four, twenty-five report card is based on the graduating class of two thousand and twenty-four. Okay? So we had, we had at the previous report card talked about our graduation rate at that time was ninety-six. And I'm going four-year. I'm not going five-year. So our four-year graduation and the state report card, which Nick will talk about, is the graduation rate is a combination of the four-year and five-year graduation rate. So I'm just talking about four-year rate only. So back in two thousand and twenty-three, our four-year graduation rate was ninety-six point one percent, which at that time was the highest graduation percentage in the history of the district. Class of twenty-four, this, this report card, they were at ninety-five point seven percent, which is still pretty darn good. But we already know, we've already determined what the graduation rate is going to be for the class of two thousand and twenty-five, and it's at ninety-eight point three percent, which is something we've never ever accomplished before. So I know Dr. Smithberger is already celebrating that with his high school staff. And and I think what I want to make a point, like what we do at the high school to get that and the programming and the the things that we've put in place have really helped that. But this is really a K eight response ability, right? We work K eight, preparing our kids for what they're going to do in high school. And so just the shift that we've the shifts that we've seen over the last couple of years, we're seeing big gains in a lot of the things that we're doing across the district. So it's just something to really be proud of. And I don't want to wait till next year to share that information because I think it's information good enough to share this year. And then just a reminder that Friday is our Titan tailgate. So we're excited about that. I think I had told a couple of board members yesterday at the Arts Festival. What's kind of cool is, and we're going to present this in December, the update on Destination two thousand and twenty-seven, which will also include an update on the BMHS alumni group. And so they've been invited specifically for the the tailgate on Friday night. So we'll share, I'm going to have Christina share more information about the actual alumni group and what's been happening and how they see this all taking off. But we know that tailgate is a great way for our community to come together and celebrate all the really cool things that are happening in the district. Unless you have questions, that's all I have.
We'll move on to, let's see, item number two. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding with the Berea Federation of Teachers and the Berea Board of Education for the addition of a stipend for staff wellness as wellness ambassador, as shown in the attached exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
So this came out, all of the work that the district is doing with staff wellness. And I know Dr. Stropko had come to and Mr. Draves had come to Jill and I with this proposal of if if we want this focus, let's go ahead and and be able to have something like this in the buildings that we can drive our initiatives forward and the work that we're doing forward with the Staff Wellness Committee.
So there will be one per building?
Yeah, and it's in the agenda to approve. They've already been selected, so.
There are no questions. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes. Onto the consent agenda. It's recommended that items D four through D twenty-six It's recommended that items D4 through D26 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
Second.
I think as Mr. Schwinn had said, there's a, especially personnel is very, there's a lot there tonight, but the vast majority of that are routine consent agenda items that we, we do at the beginning of the year. We do have five retirements. We have Heidi Keenan, she's a school psychologist at Grindstone and she's retiring at the end of this month. And she's been with the district in a capacity in and out since 1999. Heather Kozar, who is a science teacher at the high school, is retiring effective October 17th of this year. She's been with the district since 1998. And then we have three staff members who are, have already put in their retirement request to retire at the end of the school year. So they'll be here with us through, through May. And that's Tracy Krug, who's kindergarten teacher at BPE, who's been with us since 1991. Terry Martin, who's one of our world language teachers at the high school, she's been with us since 1991. And then Kathy Roast is a science teacher at the middle school and she's been with us since 1999. So getting it in early and getting prepared.
Some sadness. I know four of the teachers very well and just like the void that that leaves, Jill, I think going to be very difficult. There's a great deal of expertise.
Yeah, yeah. So, but we wish them all the best in their decision to retire. That's all I have unless there are any specific questions about any of the agenda items.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes. Item number 27, it's recommended that the following supplemental be approved for the 25, 26 school year as shown below.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes. Number 28, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the contract with Strongsville Psychological Services for the Employee Assistance Program effective September 1 of '25 through August 31st of '26 as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
This is just an annual agreement.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes. Number 29, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the field placement affiliation agreement between Grand Canyon University and the Berea City School District as shown.
So moved.
This is just, we've done, I actually talked to Dr. Stropko, we've done an agreement with them. It's been a while, so we just have a teacher who's going to do a field experience with us in the district.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Onto our second consent agenda. It's recommended that items D31 through D35 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved. Second.
Only if there are questions.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Item number 36, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the district placement agreement between the Berea City School District and the Trust the Journey Academy for the 2025, 26 school year as shown in the exhibit.
I'll move.
Second.
So I'm just going to, if you're, if you're okay, I'll address this and the next item because they, they're both on there for the same reason. So we had a, a place where we had kids placed that has closed. So the Trust Journey Academy and then the next one, the Phoenix Learning Academy are two new ones that those students that were in, it was Inside Academy, were going to or going somewhere else. So it's just an approval of a new placement.
Is Inside Academy the one that, is that the old Albert Building?
Yes. They had, they had multiple locations, right? Didn't they? In, in Westlake. Yes.
So all of them have closed or just the one?
They all have closed.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes. Number 37, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the agreement with Phoenix Learning Center, LLC, for the provision of special education and related services for the 25, 26 school year as shown in the exhibit.
I'll move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 38, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the updated gifted plan for the 25, 26 school year as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
So I don't know if the board wants, so I put in there a document that also included all the changes and what the exact changes were. And so I think if you saw what the changes were, the vast majority of changes to the gifted plan have to do with any kind of changes in the gifted rules. So we are, we are bound by the gifted rules to make those changes to our plan when we do. The only other change that was not really a gifted rule plan was the one that was listed on, listed on page 10. We did eliminate the grade two self-contained classroom. We are only now servicing our students in grades three and four. It was, you know, we had a lot of conversation with the teacher and they're full, they're at 20, they're each at 20 kids. Second grade wasn't typically as many kids and they just felt that the range even between second graders coming in and third graders coming in was still, you know, there's, there was enough difference that they didn't feel that servicing second graders was, was really a good plan for our kids. Now, if you are, if we have a parent of a second grader who wants their child to be more like in that kind of program, they can apply to have their child grade level accelerated and whatnot and could become a third grader in the program, but we are just not including second graders. Other than that, really everything else is in there, changes to WEPS and some of the other things just because of the gifted rules.
WEP stands for?
A Written Education Plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for including the summary of the changes. It's always so helpful to
You're welcome.
to narrow it down and focus our attention on truly what is being changed in the plan. So roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Item 39, it's, oops, wait, I just got a, I just got an error. Oh no. So did our overhead here.
Busy night. I have it, yeah.
Oh yeah. Do you want mine?
Keep clicking on it, you know when it comes back up.
Here at the bottom, 39.
Number 39, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase from Reality Works for 16 Real Care Babies for the Berea Mid Park High School Child Development Course as shown in the exhibit.
Second.
These are replacing old dolls that are obsolete for their simulations that they use.
What I found particularly funny was that it was buy three, get one free.
It made it even more enticing.
The babies were buy three, get one free. So we'll have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
I think it's back up.
Mine's not.
Number 40, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following district-sponsored overnight field trips. The girls' basketball team for December 13, 2024 through, I'm sorry, 2025 through December 14th, 2025, to Belleville, Belleville, Belleville High School in Belleville, Michigan for a basketball tournament.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes. Number 41, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following district overnight field trip as well. Choir and Orchestra, April 7th through the 9th of 2026 to Chicago, Illinois to perform at the Field Museum of Natural History, to attend a musical and to visit other cultural attractions.
I'll move. Second.
This sounds wonderful. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
It looks like it.
Yeah, glad I did not hand this away too quickly. Can I continue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Item 42, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a replacement Kubota and plow for Berea Mid Park High School from Sourcewell in the amount of $35,595.42 as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
Only if there's a question.
New heavy machinery for the
Oh yeah, your high school custodial staff will be there.
Found any questions? We'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes. Number 43, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the quotes from Ketchum Walton totaling $27,042.94 for the purchase of pre-filters and washable filters for districts HVAC as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Only if there's questions.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Can I, can I ask pause for this one?
Yes.
So item 41, 44.
Forty-four.
I, we're just in the, so the board knows this too and I think we talked about this at a prior meeting. Once, what, what we're working off of is once our board agenda goes live, if there's something that's going to come off, instead of pulling it off, we're going to bring it here and have you guys remove it. So we had put in the executive content for the educational alternatives, transportation. We were hoping to have the contract by today. We did not receive it. So I would just ask for the board to motion to have this, this agenda item removed and hopefully we'll have it on by the next board meeting.
Do you have a motion to remove item 44 from the agenda?
So, second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes. Number 45, it's a resolution to authorize the use of parental transportation contracts. It resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the Berea City School District to utilize parental transportation contracts for the 25, 26 school year as shown in the exhibit.
So I just want to make a correction here. So in the executive content and then in my board update that I had sent on Friday, we had talked about, and when the actual resolution was put on the first time, we were under the impression that we could also offer payment to, I put in the update about McKinney-Vento and homeless students. And so thank goodness, we had today, looking further into that, we cannot do it for that purpose. So we can offer payment in lieu to students with an IEP if we have to transport, if we deem that transportation to be impractical, but not for a student who is homeless. We do think there is an alternative to that, to transportation, but we're going to look more into that and that may be come before the board at another time also. But I just wanted to be transparent with that as far as my, what my update was on Friday and then what, what the new content, executive content says today.
How different in lieu we've been doing?
It's specifically, you have to pass a resolution specifically if you do it for students who are on an IEP. Yeah.
Set new?
No.
No.
Yeah, we've just, we haven't used it.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Item number 46, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve policy number 52, 23, release time for religious instructions revision as shown in the exhibit.
Second.
I brought this back with me tonight. Do you all want this or no? This, I think I presented at the last, here, I'll just, here, Jill, just pass those down. So the, the two changes that are recommended in the policy to our current policy and so per the, what was included in House Bill 8 was the first part of it, on the first side, that requires school districts to admit students to attend a release time course of religious instruction for at least one period per week. We had one day, so changing it to period, it works. And, and we're, we're really fine with day, but we'll change it to period, it makes sense. And then on the backside was the additional piece of, board policy cannot prohibit students from bringing external educational program materials into school. So, and I also heard the board at the last meeting talk about not wanting them to bring food and other items too. So what was removed, because it's, it's the law, they are allowed to bring any kinds of materials and things, trinkets or whatever back. But this policy then would, would still state from the district that it will not, will not provide participating students with any snacks, candies or food for their return to school. So unless the board wants that changed and you want to permit that, we would change that. But I thought I heard you all say that that was something that you did not necessarily want to happen also. And so those two changes may, put us in compliance with the law.
My question is the, the, they're, they're, the, I imagine the spirit of the law or the, you know, the code here is when not excluding any educational or program materials, I'm thinking it's any worksheets or that kind of stuff from the program, which I see materials, I guess clothing if they were to get a T-shirt.
Well, that's what we're removing because the law says that they can't bring that back. I mean, that they can, that they can bring that back.
Okay.
Are you seeing that as?
What, 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 what do we think a trinket is?
I don't think trinkets are educational.
What do you think a trinket?
That's what we're saying, that they, that, I see that, that's already defined in the law. Like that you can't bring a trinket, bring external education and program materials into school. So I
The law says that we can't prohibit, our policy can't prohibit it.
Correct, correct, correct. So that we're taking that out of there is what we're doing because we had it in our policy that they couldn't bring it. So we're striking it out because
But what I think I'm saying and Cory is saying is that trinkets don't qualify as educational and program materials.
I mean, it's, you know,
Trinkets are toys.
It's, you know, it's word choice, it's semantics, right? So, but I would think that a trinket would be a, like a little, you know, almost like a promotional or a toy or an incentive that they perhaps received at, which is not necessarily education-related. So we can
So I look from the guidance that we've gotten, a program material, so if it's a certain, so it's their program and if they are promoting their program, that they would be able to send something back to school with the students.
So if it's something that has their logo on it, fine. But if they're bringing back, you know, like a fidget toy that's just a toy.
Yes.
That's a trinket. That's not the same thing.
Then we'd have to define
Again, we're splitting hairs here, but even if it's a fidget toy that's got their logo on it,
I agree, but it's a program.
It's not education-related.
Right, but
But this doesn't say just educational, it says educational and program materials. It's both.
Well, program materials to me implies that it's something having to do with
Their curriculum.
Their curriculum and what they're doing and, yeah.
All I'm saying, in my, in my guidance, and then it's your policy. So I, what I'm saying in my, my guidance has, has said that it's any, so if they want to send a T-shirt back, they can send a T-shirt back with the kids is what the guidance that we have had is. And that's, that's a program. It's, so let's just, it's Lifewise. So if Lifewise has a T-shirt, because that's the program because that's their, the program is Lifewise, that they could send a T-shirt back to school with a student.
Almost like they would, they would wear their...
Which is, which is considered a program material.
I agree with that, but I still don't think trinkets...
They would, they would wear the T-shirt perhaps the day that they were going. So that would be like a good identifying thing, like kids are all wearing their T-shirts.
We can change trinkets to toys, if that's more self-explanatory. And also, I think whatever they're bringing back needs to be put right in their backpacks.
Yeah, we've had that conversation. We've already met with them, and they are totally get it.
I'd like to see it in the policy.
Is this language that has been recommended by Neola, are we following Neola guidance by adopting?
Yeah. Not, I wouldn't say like exactly word for word, because we had to go into our policy and change what our policy is, but that's what Neola is recommending. Yes.
I agree with Anna. I think I'd like to change, like, think of trinkets as a toy, and have that listed as an excluded item. So either leave trinkets in the policy as an excluded item, or change it to toys.
Other, do you?
I am fine with what has been proposed today. I don't think that we need to change.
And then we should vote on this one, and then if we want to make change, amend that and vote on that.
Thoughts, or move any further?
Why you seem logical?
Should be excluded, or?
Yeah.
Does this have to be in, done by?
Hey, why'd you just catch me off guard? Not, well, it's, what is it, ninety days after the law has passed? So it's now. I mean, ish, we have to do it now.
But that part was put in the law with the budget.
Yeah.
June thirtieth.
So we have a little bit of time. So I, I will tell you, and I put that in, I put in my board update that we have met with Lifewise, because they're still continuing at Big Creek for this year. And we've had the conversation about all of this, and the agreement that when I, when anything comes back, it goes in a bookbag. Don't bring in food, because we don't really let kids bring in food anyhow, because of allergies and all that. Totally understood, totally agreed to it. So I just, I just don't want our policy to be out of compliance when it's supposed to be.
But we don't know that it's not.
Yeah, I... And I'm like drawing a total... Actually, I, I, we've got so much flying at us right now, I can't keep straight, dates straight. I shouldn't say that. All right, thanks, Mike.
Sorry, what's Mike looking for?
He's looking too. We're just trying to, oh, where's my one? Is that what it is?
September.
Did Neola send out a separate update on it?
Yeah, we got guidance from them, yes.
Is it on board docs? Because the latest thing here is April twenty-twenty-five.
I don't know. April? No, we got it after that.
Oh, it would have been after that.
Oh, I didn't even know.
Oh, we have August, August twenty-twenty-five, there's one.
That is correct. August twenty-twenty-five is correct. That's, that was the last, is that the right date? August twenty-twenty? We didn't revise polit, no, I just, I brought it to the board last month, but no policy. Yes, the last revision date was January.
It just says bringing external educational and program materials into school. Bringing program material.
Find it, Mike? Yeah, so here's, with respect to specific ban on prohibited students, for, on prohibiting students from bringing educational and program materials into school, the determination of just what materials, including snacks, clothing, candies, trinkets, et cetera, are program-related, may be difficult. And we anticipate that challenges will ensue for any effort to limit what students bring when returning from religious instruction. So that's the guidance that we're getting from Neola and the attorneys.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, too.
September, September twenty-fifth.
September thirtieth, and we don't have...
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I would like to keep trinkets as an excluded item, but perhaps change it to trinkets slash toys, so that we can say that that's the spirit of what we mean by trinket. That, that being said, do we, asking our treasurer, secretary, is it, should we vote on the, this resolution, does it, are this policy change as written, and then if it, I mean, should we, should it fail?
The motion on the floor is for this one.
Okay.
You have to vote on this one.
Okay, so we will vote on this one. If we want to change it, we would fail this and motion to have a different one presented. Okay. That being said, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
No.
Mrs. Ferris?
No.
Mr. Mack?
No.
Okay. Um, would like, I would like to have someone entertain a motion to modify policy fifty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, fifty-two, twenty-three, to change the word date a period, and to strike...
No, to not strike trinkets.
Well, we need to strike materials, clothing, and other items. And add...
Slash toys.
Slash toys to trinkets, and add food.
What was already here, we're just adding the others.
Right. Would anyone like to motion that?
So moved.
Second.
That, okay, Jill, you got that?
Yep, got it.
And then a roll call.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Onto Jill's treasurer's update.
Um, I just wanted to update the board tonight on the changes in the five-year forecast. I sent out an email earlier this week. With the biennial budget bill, there are submission changes to the five-year forecast. This year, the first submission is due October fifteenth, and the second submission is due February twenty-eighth. Moving forward to next year, the first submission is due August thirty-first, and the second submission is due February twenty-eighth. I believe some of the changes to the forecast submissions were made because of all the property tax reform that was almost rolled into the budget bill that the governor vetoed. These changes would allow, would have given the Budget Commission more time to look at our cash balances, to, to justify if levies needed to be rolled back further. Once everything was vetoed out of the budget bill, these submission deadlines are going to be very challenging, especially when they're moved to August. A lot of the negatives on moving the submission deadlines, our permanent appropriations, our budgets aren't even due to the county till September thirtieth. You start with temporaries, and then you, you have your permanent appropriations that are due to the county in September. Our new hires, they have thirty days to apply for the health insurance, so I might not even have all of the health insurance by August. We're going to try. We're going to try to, try to make deadlines more tighter for them to, to get their paperwork in. The May forecast was definitely a more accurate forecast. You had ninety percent of your revenues received, and eighty-three percent of your expenditures had occurred. Moving to February will definitely make it less accurate, because we're still collecting property taxes. Our final settlement is until March. The May forecast also included actual budgets for the next year. We, I usually start budget season around February, March with the departments. We meet in April, we go over them, so then I have the budgets ready to go for the, for the next year for the forecast. Moving the budgets back, it, it won't be practical for the departments to move them back. So again, that'll be challenging. It's going to be spent more time. More time's going to be spent constantly monitoring it to ensure it's accurate. So what I've talked to Tracy about, and what I've, what I think we're going to do moving forward, is we will do the required submissions in August and in February. But I'm also going to do an update in November and an update in May. It's, 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 just so we have, we use that document so much, and we rely on that document for so much of our planning and so much of what we're doing, that it's just important to do that. So I will come to the board with four forecasts. I will, will show, show the board, and we will go over them. They might not be as in-depth in November and May, but you'll have an update. You'll have what changed, why it changed, and then I'll ask you to require me to resubmit it, because the optional windows are open, so I can resubmit during November and during May. So that's what we're going to do moving forward. Again, the document is, is very key for us, and we use it for a lot of our decision-making. I spend a lot of time making sure it's accurate. And again, these, these submission deadlines are very challenging, to say the least. If you want...
What's the reasoning behind that, those particular times?
Like I said, I think the August one was to give the County Budget Commission more time.
Okay.
So if they were going to read, because of our cash balances, but that got vetoed.
Right.
Which didn't affect us anyway. That gave them the time to certify our stuff to us for the next collection cycle. Or if they had to reduce levies, then they had time to reduce them.
And then that second date would be, well, would have been X amount of months after, or, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know why February. It's also now going to be, they're calling it a three-year forecast, but it's technically a four-year forecast. It's supposed to be our, our current year plus three. So it's really a four-year forecast. I, again, will still continue to do a five-year forecast. That is best practice, and people will tell you that's best practice. So, you know, the fifth year might not be as accurate, but I tried my best to make it as accurate as possible, so.
Speaking with your fellow treasurers, is this, I'm sure you're all kind of trying to navigate this new timetable. Is this something that you're collectively seeing as, because the...
Collectively, in the meeting we had the other day, a lot of us agreed that we're going to continue to do the forecast the way we always have. How the auditor of state's going to interpret our first year and it being appropriations, are they going to match that directly to our appropriation resolutions, which sometimes our budgets don't match appropriations? Appropriations sometimes are a little higher, so we don't get budgetary violations. But so we, we have to go through this first audit cycle to see if the auditor of state's going to literally, how they're going to approach this when they test our forecast. And again, the collective talk around the room last Friday at my treasurer's meeting was, pretty much everybody's going to submit for a forecast. We, we do rely on this document, so we're just going to take the time and do it.
Surely, doing more is only a good thing.
Yes, right, right. So we'll, you'll see that coming up. At the October thirteenth board meeting, I'll have the first submission, and then we'll circle back in November. So still, as of last week, we were collecting insurance forms. But again, we're, we're getting a process to work that out, to get that a little tighter. So my reports on the agenda tonight, there's nothing unusual. Tax collections were down slightly, but nothing too concerning at this point.
So early in the year?
Yeah, and again, we'll, we'll continue to monitor that. But again, everything's running smoothly, so.
Onto the consent agenda for the treasurer. It's recommended that items E-three through E-sixteen be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
I want to point out on the consent agenda, the donations tonight. It's very, very proud of all the donations that have come in. As we did last year, the boosters have donated thirty thousand dollars, so any middle school or high school student can get into athletic home games for free. If you'll also notice, the American Legion donated five grand to Brook Park Elementary for enhanced learning at Brook Park Elementary. So I want to thank everybody for the donations. Two thousand dollars from the Veterans of Forum Wars for Camp My Broby scholarships. That's great. My appropriation resolution on the agenda tonight, it's kind of long, but what, what's happening this time of year is I'm closing one federal grant and opening another federal grant. The twenty-five grants are done and all closed out. The twenty-six grants were very late coming, because they had system issues down at DEW, where they've actually took them out of the new system and put them back in the old system. So this was just cleaning up the twenty-six federal grants that we finally received in August. So there will be more once we get the carryover to move into the twenty-six grants, so I'll have more probably October, November to finalize the twenty-six grants. But that's why they're so long this time. Food services on there. Food service, I had to increase some of their lines, but Carrie also got a, a grant for fresh fruits and vegetables, almost a hundred and thirty grand. So all the elementaries will be participating in the fresh fruits and vegetable program this year. I think she's starting in October with that. So, so yeah, she's about a hundred and thirty grand grant that she got for that.
Awesome.
I have a question about the SWC pricing.
Yes.
So is, does that mean that it's only those prices when we're playing an SWC opponent?
Yes, yes.
So like, when we're hosting somebody that's not SWC, then what's the price? Oh, so our price is always this?
Yes. But you could go to another...
Somebody else's stadium?
Yeah.
And then the last two, I think the bottom one should be student admission, it says general. There's two generals, one for five and one for three.
Okay, I'll have to check with Ryan. I'm not, I didn't put...
I'm just going by what the other ones say. General and a student, a general.
Yes, you're right, Anna. You're right. I will correct.
What was, I mean, how much increase is that?
Um, I believe about two to three bucks. I think it was seven or eight. Yeah.
Yeah.
Passes are much affordable.
Oh, I know. That's why I don't know how much it costs, because I always got my kids a pass.
Yeah.
Anything else? A roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number seventeen, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the disposal by auction sale of the items as presented in the attached list, and remove them from the inventory records of the district.
So moved.
Um, I think this is the second or third year we've held an auction in the district, and just again, approving the disposal of the items.
I did go online and check these items out when it was for sale, and I'm so glad that the five drums of hand sanitizer was sold to one buyer at the bargain price of twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. So that is ounce for ounce, an incredible price for hand sanitizer. I'm sorry, did we vote on that?
No, no.
Let's, let's have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Under regular business minutes, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the August eleventh records meeting and the August eleventh regular meeting, as shown in the attached exhibits.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, corrections, questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Item two, it's a resolution to appoint a board member as the Ohio School Board Association's Capitol Conference delegate. Be it resolved that Corey Ferris, myself, will be appointed to serve as a delegate, and Mr. Rick Mack will be appointed as an alternate, effective today, September fifteenth.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Legislative update?
Uh, no update. There, I think next week is one committee hearing, start again, and everybody's back. I think next week is when committee hearings start again and everybody's back.
Board of Education, any committee reports? Our last meeting?
Friday.
The Wellness Committee is sponsoring WellFest on the 27th, 10 to 12, I believe. The 10 to 12? Yeah.
And Board of Education comments?
Yeah, just want, this past summer, having been a coach, you connect with a lot of kids and stuff, and I was invited to two separate weddings, both people who were in the class of 2017. Just to see our young people out there, like the young woman who is getting married is a special needs teacher, working out with, in Brunswick, if I'm not mistaken, actually, but in the wedding party, part of the four-by-eight. The one girl's an occupational therapist, the one is in her first year of residency in medical school, you know, just really great people, doing well. And the other kids who were there who were Berea Mid-Park kids, that was the first class to go through the connectedness of that group. And so then on Saturday, it was at a wedding for a young man who was on her, placing four-by-eight team. And again, it was just a core of guys, and my wife was amazed, I'm not sure why, but it was kind of sexist thought of sorts, but you know, just how well behaved and you know, just, she's like, oh my gosh, you know, these guys, they're such gentlemen. It's like, well, that's what we expected, you know? And so just to see them out there, one's an electrical engineer, the person who did the service was Patrick, who's a postman, but he did a beautiful solemn service for the couple. And a couple of, you know, the other kids who were there are all moving on in life and doing well and just, I think, good empathetic...
Were these former students?
Former runners.
Runners? And you were invited to their weddings?
Yeah.
Fantastic.
We budgeted a decent amount in the summers. They're a lot, coached a lot of kids.
That's amazing that you still maintain those relationships, celebrate their...
Fortunate, ma'am.
Their life events still after many years.
Thank you.
On the agenda this evening is a resolution that I put together for our board to consider. Back in 2021, there were some language changes that were brought before the Ohio School Board Associations for changes to their legislative platform. The guidelines for which their people advocate for or against topics that may come before the legislatures. Back in 2021, there was a request to add sexual orientation and gender identity to the list of protected groups, on which the OSBA would advocate for. And it was a very long meeting. It was very well debated. In the end, it required three-fourths vote to pass the change, and it came down to 72.1%. So it did not pass by a hair. I would like to try again and bring forward a resolution to add sexual orientation, gender identity to the platform. And I also added the word religious, which we can discuss that as well, but I feel that that too is something that everybody should, you know, it shouldn't matter, everybody regardless of all of these descriptors should, all students should be advocated for. And that was just an additional group that I was thinking could use our help. The changes are indicated in capital letters and are highlighted. There's one change where I just kind of wanted to line everything up so that it's, that everything is the same wherever these groupings are mentioned, that they're consistent, so that it would be racial, ethnic, sexual orientation, gender identity, religion, and socioeconomic background. So I've shared with the board my resolution, and I open this up for discussion.
I want to state that I will support the proposed resolution. It will possibly be considered a broadening of the original equity statement. It is a right to protect all of our students. I think our schools have always had a diverse population, and we have always strived to put the needs of diversity as possible. One of the keystones of our heightened empathy, and our staff tries to model, reinforce it, because the school board must make sure we do this. We are in a difficult time culturally. Values like empathy, justice, often, we will be faced with challenges, values in the future. A few months ago, we as a board were faced with being threatened with the loss of money if we didn't rescind any diversity equity policies. My opinion, sadly, we conceded that moral high ground. The rescinding of our own equity statement seems to lessen the impact of the resolution. We may potentially pass. I am of firm belief that we must stand for righteousness, justice, equity at all times, demonstrating these values, even when we're under distress, in fact, even in difficult times. I...
Because of the repealing of the, okay. Not because this language is not strong enough, but because of our previous actions?
I feel like Rick does. I am very supportive of the language, very well-written, but if we're expecting people at the state level to go along with this, but we, at our own local level, we rescinded resolutions based on the same exact things, I don't think that's a good look. I would be, I mean, I would like to maybe suggest going back and reopening those resolutions.
I think we all understand that the reason that we rescinded these documents was because of the threat to our district that would meet our educators and our students. And it doesn't have, it didn't have anything to do with the way that we feel about these groups and what is affecting these groups. And so I disagree with you that it's a bad look, and I think it's appropriate for our district to put forward a resolution like this because of our longstanding support for all of our students.
I agree that we did that only because we had to, but still, on paper, it's, what's done is done. And if someone, you know, there are 600 voting members of the delegate assembly, you know, they could very easily look up Berea schools and see that we rescinded those two resolutions.
I think we're in favor of...
Right. And we're asking for their support.
I think any school district could understand the reasoning behind how we voted when we rescinded those resolutions. I'd also like to point out the difference between the resolutions we rescinded and this particular one. The one that we rescinded was, it said so much more, and I agree with that resolution, but it said so much more, and those, and what it said was what was in violation of the federal executive order. This, this doesn't go as deep. This is just asking the OSBA to add those subgroups, those subgroups to who they advocate for. I think they're, I think they're very different. And again, I think that anybody, I don't think this would reflect poorly on us. And my hope is that, you know, eventually, we can resurrect a, you know, either that resolution or another resolution without fear of retribution.
Well, we can do that now. We can do that next month. There wasn't a retribution, and there were 15 school districts that didn't participate. There were other school districts that signed it, but they didn't have to rescind their resolutions.
I think what we have, our list is, we're facing a difficult decision, legal and moral. So figuring out what, what things come, difficult decision.
There's not a deadline for submitting, correct?
Correct, but the sooner I, we approve it, I've reached out to OSBA and to their legislative contact, let them know that we were going to be discussing this as a board and possibly passing the resolution, and asking for next steps. Ideally, they would like to be able to share with all 600 districts, whatever would be, because this item will be presented from the floor, and to give districts an opportunity to be aware and of what will be coming from the floor. You know, the more time, the better. And of course, with the meeting once a month, that narrows...
Right, but the conference is like November 16th. We have a meeting October 13th.
And it's the other way? It is, I'm sorry? Yes, but is the, in the...
The conference is later issue.
Oh, it is, okay.
Not only after elections.
Okay. I still, I don't know, I still would want to...
I'm not ready to vote on, I think we need to have more conversation, also Katie's not here. I would prefer postponing... But it is on the agenda.
Right.
No, we don't do it.
Correct.
I think...
Are all supported. Oath, right? Question of whether to resurrect prior resolution is a separate issue. It's something that, it's a potential motion from the board. But I also think, given that we had counsel from, legal counsel advising us as a board, should we rescind the prior resolution? I think that we need to go back and talk about, talk with our legal counsel about the advisability of undoing what we just did, as distasteful as it was, but I don't see that that has, that that has anything to do with the resolution that is on the agenda, and I would be prepared to approve it.
And I, and we don't necessarily have to go and resurrect those, we could create new ones.
And we can do that, we can have a discussion about that at the next meeting, but I don't want to pull this back. I want to, I want to continue to move forward with this resolution.
I understand that, but I...
But you're, it almost, I think it's being, it's being held hostage so that, so that the old...
I can't put my complete force behind this, knowing that this board, for whatever reason, rescinded two resolutions that talk about the same thing. Even though I support it 100%.
I think that it is disingenuous for you to say, for whatever reason, because you know what the reason was, that we took that action.
Okay.
And we also know that as board members, it is our responsibility to be supportive of the action that the board took. And I know that you disagree with what we did, nobody liked it, but...
I understand that.
But I think that...
I also think we're in a different time now than we were five months ago. Nothing ever came of those threats.
And I'm not sure that we want to hold our backs.
Yeah, I, I think these are two different, related, two different issues, and I would like to move forward with this resolution with the idea that we can have another board discussion when Katie is here about, I'm gonna say resurrecting the one that we rescinded, whether it is that one or another one, another statement from the board, but I don't want to hold back on this because of that. So I am...
But if Katie's not here, and that's where we're gonna discuss that at the next meeting, then we should wait until Katie's here also, as there is no time, there is no deadline. The October 13th meeting is still more than a month before, it could be literally emailed to the delegates the next day.
Second? Can we have a roll call, please? Yes, sir? Yes. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm going to vote yes, with the promise that we revisit and have a session in regard.
Were there any other board comments? Real quick, this past weekend, the board was at the Berea Arts Festival, and once again, a really great event, and we actually, we had several people come up to the table and ask really thoughtful, concerning questions, and had some really great conversations. I would say it's probably the best conversations that I've personally had at these events in a long time. Good, good talks. Several of us were at the Grindstone Awards, and that was also earlier last week, and that was fantastic. Susan Hans, our president of the Education Foundation, was awarded the Grindstone Award for 2025. And then a quick future event that you could probably see us at, and this is kind of news, well, the Middleburg Heights Celebration and Trade Show is coming up on Thursday, the 25th. That's a community, kind of like a community resource fair, where there'll be information on volunteer opportunities in the cities. We got a whole bunch of school district-related groups that are going to be there, present, PTAs and clubs. Polaris will be there as well, the Education Foundation, in addition to Food Pantry, Women's Club, City Club, Garden Club. garden club, and lots of community churches. That'll be at the Middleburg Heights Community Center. And then it's time to, spooky season time, so we're coming up on all three cities' fall festivals. And I'll put a bug in our community relations person there to, to help us coordinate. Middleburg Heights Fall Fest is going to be on October 4th. The Boo Park Fall Festival in Brook, Brook Park is the 5th of October, and the Berea Harvest Festival will be on the 12th of February. I'm sure there'll be a table here for the, from the board. I'm so sorry, October, thank you. October 12th. So the 4th, 5th, and 12th. So there'll be a table with us handing out goodies for hundreds and hundreds of children that we get to see in their costumes. So look forward to that. And if there isn't anything else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn, please. So moved. And a roll call, please.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.